Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Butler.
Here.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here. Consent agenda, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to do that? Hearing none. I move at the minutes of the regular meeting of November the 4th, 2025, that bills and payroll for the first half of November 2025 are approved. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Cox, roll call.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications, this portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda. But the council may direct staff to address the topic to refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentations to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you to state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Okay, is there anybody that want to address the council that is other than the solar, solar farm issues? Anybody other than that issue? Yes, please come forward. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you a second to look that over as well.
Yep. And please state your name and where you're from.
My name's Urbish. I'm coming from Harry's Gas and Liquor out on Old State Road here in Matthew.
Okay. Everybody done? Okay, go ahead.
So this is the second city council meeting that we've been to. Once we met with you privately, Mr. Mayor, when you became into office.
Right.
We met with you and Mr. Palguil as well.
Right.
About the same situation. Now, we want to try and get a tap bar system and getting license there out on Old State Road. We've tried for multiple years now, nothing's come of it. Even in the last city council meeting, someone just wanted to contact us. We don't want this time. It's been about two months. They did it on page as well. So I don't know where you guys are at with it, what happened. You wanted to contact me about this. I know you guys are very against opening a gaming license. I understand that. But the reason that you're trying to stop people from spending money on gaming, you're going to, you can't control them. If that's what your reasoning is, like, oh, we don't want people spending money on gaming, how are you going to control someone that didn't do that? If they want to gamble, they're going to go to tear it up. They're going to go to casinos. They're going to go somewhere. How are you going to control the person? That makes no sense. And you told me this personally, like, you want to stop. You don't want that gaming license.
No, no, let me clarify that. I didn't say we don't want any. What I said is, we don't want so many that no one's making any money. You know, there's only going to be a certain, market can be saturated in people that.
You can't control it either, though, sir.
That's true.
That's competition. Business is going to count. That's competition. You guys open four more liquor licenses, that's going to affect my business.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So now I have to find ways to make money. You want your tax money every year. How do I pay you guys then if I'm not making enough money to pay you?
Yeah, okay, so, yeah. We, we've adjusted the liquor license some, as you know.
Well, four X, right, yes.
Yeah, so, and we're still reviewing that as, as we feel like we need to do something. But other than that, right now, we've been doing a lot of things and right now, there's not one open for you.
So told us that you wanted to develop that side of town, which is Old State Road.
Right.
Have you not, whatever.
Correct.
So then what is the reason for not giving us a tap bar system, just like the one in Effingham has or the one in Champagne has? We're trying to bring that here to Matthew for the past three years, nothing's come of it.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that some more among.
Yeah.
We continue to look at our liquor ordinance. We've changed a lot of our liquor ordinance. We continue to look at it. Every time we do change, there is people challenging some of the changes and stuff, so we are still reviewing some of those and may have to make more changes, so.
So what, what needs to be added? I can start someone calling down here and talking about this. Because this, I mean, three years.
Yeah, but it's, it's hard to say. I mean, we continue to discuss and we got to get a council that's all on the same page and wants the same thing, so, you know, it's, it's their directive to go what direction they would like to go. And, and I'm sure several of them have different opinions on what should and shouldn't, just as staff has different opinions on what should and shouldn't.
So here's the, now you're holding four more liquor licenses, that's on you guys, that's fine, no problem. Competition is great. Now, our business is going to be affected by a greater than 50% now, if you look at it. So how do we compensate for that? If we're trying to bring more business to Matthew, why are you guys against it?
So I wouldn't say we're against it, but again, they, some policies have been set in place by other councils, and so they are trying to do what they can go to, to correct or, you know.
To my knowledge, there aren't any cities that have unlimited liquor license, have as many as you can. Almost all of them have limits. And you, you weren't, you were not in order, the only license that we've issued are ones that were in line ahead of you. You, you haven't been, you haven't been treated any different than anybody else. If we open up more and you're in line and you've got the application, then, then we'll, we'll, we'll be able to do something.
We've been on the occasion.
Okay.
We've been in line.
Yeah.
That's why I've been coming back.
Yeah.
I spoke with you personally once.
Yeah, right.
You've been filed total second time, two times in this, this council meeting. If nothing is coming of it, that's why we're coming here, you guys, because you guys are going to make this happen.
Yeah. Good.
How many, how many businesses are requesting a license?
On the list right now, I don't know.
I, I would say there's maybe a couple on the bar tavern license.
The total is 17 that have been issued.
Yeah, I think there may be two of them.
But, you know, and if I could add something very briefly, we talked about law, that, so one of the things we were going to bring up is the, about the, the retreat, so natural ordinance that might pave the way for, like, the ones.
Sure.
Spaces, kind of, developed, standing wide. There is going to be a lot of housing built in that area, potentially for younger people, so it'd be a good idea. That said, I also do see the other side where, according to their public, for the town, it's one of the things that.
Could you talk a little louder for everybody?
That more gaming do tend to have lower median incomes, and so that's something I'm sure a council wants to balance to some extent. So, you know, it's something we could definitely, I, I would be willing to give you a deadline for, like, perhaps, was good to, for your review, let's say, by the end of December, I have that ordinance.
Well, that, that kind of item will come up on our retreat. We, unfortunately, we were supposed to have that this last week and it didn't work out. But the retreat that we're talking about having is, what do we want to do in the next year, two, two years? Then ultimately, we're going to have a comprehensive plan for the city that's going to be done. Where do we want to be five and 10 years from now on things like this? And those are things that are open to all the council members and even, even input from the public if we want to. But, but in fact, we want that input. But you're going to find out people don't want this.
As a small business owner, I look at that as well. Our outlook is for a long term, it's not for a short term time period.
Right.
You know, we always want to see growth in the community as well. And we've been, actually, 14, 15 years now, so we've seen how Matthew has grown.
Right.
So that's what we want to do. We want to bring growth to Matthew. This tap bar system is in different communities and say about 30 minutes south from here or 45 minutes to an hour north of you. Why is it not being able to lots of matching?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll discuss that, we'll discuss that in our retreat. So, anybody else have any questions?
I got a question. Are you interested in the tap bar or the gaming?
Both, sir.
So if you could have one, that doesn't fly?
I would like to have both.
But if you had one, that wouldn't fly? Okay. Do we know what the tap bar license in Champagne is that he's, do you want license that they have that covers this?
Or Effingham? Yeah, I don't know what, how they classify theirs.
Is that something somebody can find out and forward that to us?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Question, very, very, like, when we did, we do, uh, we have a non-video game.
Right.
instances that are, that are taking one out here.
Yeah, right.
So if you wanted the tap bar, you can have that now.
We'd like one that has game.
Yeah, right.
And you have, you've invested in the building and expanded in there.
Okay.
You guys are going to come, look at our building as well. Come check us out. We've grown, we can play for over years as well.
Okay. We went well over the three minute limit. We'll be back in touch. We're probably not going to have anything till we go have this retreat at a minimum, though.
All right, so.
And that's, we haven't got that scheduled.
He's going to reach out and win the next one.
We'll, we'll reach out to you before the end of the year and give you an update where we're at.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else other than the solar panels? All right.
Yes. Well, we're good.
Yes.
Yes, okay, who's online?
Dalton Smith.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I was actually supposed to be on the agenda today. They did not put me on the agenda. They told me they were going to. I, I'm guessing it's that special clause at the end of the agenda where it's, their guys are going to go to a private, private session? Is that, am I right about that?
No.
Regarding, and, okay.
Yeah, during the presentations is when the public can speak.
Okay, so. What is his name and address for the record?
Dalton Smith?
Yeah.
Dalton?
Dalton Smith?
Yes, D A L T O N.
What, you, would you like to say something, Dalton?
Yes, I would.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just curious, is the city council doing anything investigation wise or anything themselves looking into this officer that was previously terminated, given the option of termination or resignation for multiple violations by the city of Arcola? Are you guys going to look into this at all yourselves?
Do you address that?
We've already done.
Okay. Uh, go ahead and say what else you want and then we'll answer that question.
What other items do you have beside that?
I was denied FOIA today. I, a week ago, I put in a FOIA request for the officer's job application. I was denied for it today. Anybody in the city has the right to, to look at any job application from any tax paid employee. So I want to know why I was denied as well. Can you look into why I was denied freedom of information as well on that same employee?
Well, your statement is incorrect, sir. You don't have a right to see anything you want. There are exceptions in the Freedom of Information Act, and one of them is for personnel files of city employees, and that's why you're requesting.
Well, that's the thing. It's not actually, you can redact his personal information, but his qualifications, his resume and everything else is, is freedom of information. That's been proven multiple times in case law.
Sir, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with you or deny your request.
Okay, can I, can I, okay, can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
If I fill out a F O I A, a FOIA Freedom of Information request for every single officer's job application, are you going to continue to deny them? And anybody else that applies for them?
Yes.
Perfect, that's all I got. Thanks.
All right.
Can I reply to everyone?
Yeah, yeah, yes, please.
Except for Dalton Smith. I don't know him in explanation or anything, really.
Right.
I will tell you that A.J. Rowley, as you know, is one of our best officers. He is a detective. He's been head detective right now. He's been recognized numerous times right here in his council, council dangers for the good that he has done. And there was an extensive background done on him as well as the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board that cleared him to come over to us, as you all know. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Mr. Smith, who you just heard from, and a public records search will show you from judiciary here along that Mr. Smith has a 2017 felony conviction for possession of stolen motor vehicle and arson. So he is a.
10 years ago, perfect.
He is a convicted felon who you are hearing from. Furthermore, there are.
What's wrong with hearing from a convicted felon? What's wrong with hearing from a convicted felon?
This is not a good debate. You've had your chance to speak.
Furthermore, I don't know if you can mute him or not. Probably going to be doing that.
I don't know which one he is.
Furthermore, there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 15 open misdemeanor cases against Mr. Smith right now.
Well, when you get dirty officers, that's what you get.
By the conservation police.
Right, not by us.
Possession of the special use of perp tiles. I, I never heard that before, but he managed to do it. And also.
Called owning an alligator.
You can't cut him off, could you?
Yeah, if, if you're going to keep on interrupting, we're going to mute you.
Okay, I'll mute myself. I'll mute myself, sorry.
Okay.
You should have done that a while back. Also, charges right now are purchase of a firearm illegally and felony possession of a weapon. And I will give you one guess who the detective is that put that case on him.
Yeah, the one he's complaining about.
Ding, ding, ding. So, um, him and the attorney should fight this in court rather than try bringing something like this to a city council meeting and continue to be embarrassed.
Yeah, okay.
I'll leave it at that.
All right.
Any, any other comments anybody else wants to make again?
I have one, Mayor. Can we order a transcript of today's proceedings? Todd Reardon from Charleston, Illinois. Can we order the transcript of what just transpired?
It's, it's recorded.
It's recorded, it'll be on YouTube.
Preserve that, preserve this recording. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think maybe that's it on those. We do have a couple of presentations that are on the list. We're going to get those out of the way, and I think the audit report. Beth, next.
Sundell, are you online?
Yes, I am online. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, speak up, though.
A little bit.
Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Uh, can you turn the volume up any?
I would try. Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm sharing, I'm sharing a slide. Can you see the slide as well?
Um, we've got the slides in front of us.
Okay, okay, perfect. So, yep, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. I am Sundell Manuel, Senior Manager from Roth and Company, and I have with me in the call Aaron Donnelly, our Partner in Charge, and also Maria Serrano, our Audit Supervisor. So for today, we're going to walk you through the audit results for the fiscal year ended April 30, 2025. So we'll go over the audit opinions we issued, the key financial highlights, and the audit finding we noted. And of course, by the end of this, the slides, we'll have, answer any questions that you may have. That's the overview. So, as part of our audit, this is what we completed this year. So we audited the city's financial statement, including the library and both pension funds, so police and firefighter. And because, second bullet, because the city expanded federal, federal funds in more than 750,000 this year, we also performed a single audit under the uniform guidance. In addition to that, there are two more about related there. We issued our reports on the TIF funds and the compliance and also the GADA consolidated year and financial reports. So all of these reports, the financial statement, the single audit, the supplementary information, and TIF compliance receive unmodified opinions, so which means everything was presented fairly. So moving on to the next slide, which covers the financial highlights during the fiscal year 2025. So construction in progress was overstated in 2024 because a project had been completed but was, but the balance was still being carried as if work was ongoing. So that was corrected through a prior period adjustment. So basically, the 2024 balances have been restated.
Sundell, just want to give them some context of the amount as well, just because it's in the report. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Rick Hall. This is Aaron Donnelly speaking here. I'm the partner on that account. And the findings were communicated to Beth, right, on October 30th. And so anybody needs a copy, we can certainly send those, but just to give you a bit of context, it's about 276K, but it was all corrected and no issues there. So Sundell, run through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, moving on to the presentation. The next slide is the pension and OPEB. So these items have a significant impact on the government financial statement because it involves a long-term, you know, liabilities, liabilities to employees. So at the amount recognized this year include the annual pension and OPEB expenses as well as actuarial, actuarial adjustments. So movement in pensions and OPEB numbers are expected each year, but it don't necessarily reflect operational issues. They're often market driven. So I'm not going to go further into the details for this one. If you have any question, we'll, we'll get that address. All right. So this slide summarizes the activity across all major accounts. So again, the city's balance were generally stable and movements we saw aligned with what we would expect given the year's activity. So we did not identify any unusual shifts or transactions that would raise concerns. So as you can see, assets during the year increased approximately 9 million. This is attributable to the construction that is being done with a sports complex, complex. So we've noted a 4 million expenditures there during the year and also, in addition to that, the completion of a project Broadway Street skipping phase three, which contributed to the increase, I think that's approximately 2 million during the year. Deferred outflows and inflows, these are actually related to the OPEB. So I'm going to skip on that, but for liabilities, there's no new loans during the year, so as expected, the liabilities is, is, will be, will, will decrease. And in addition to that, OPEB liabilities also decreased during the year again due to the actuarial assumptions, market driven, basically. If you, revenues and expenditures will be discussed in the next, the following phases, but I think that we've noted very minimal increase for our movement with this account. So this is the breakdown of the major revenue sources. So I think this is aligned with the expectation, property tax, water fund and sewer services or revenues is steadily increasing with, with the increase in rates of the water rates, sewer rates, and as expected, the property tax. But wanted to more highlight on the charges for services, which actually contributed to the, to the increase of 800, approximately 800 during the year. This is due to the ambulance billing services, services for fiscal year 2025. Okay, moving on to the expenditures. The, the changes are actually, the bottom line is minimal 130K. So the, the movement in, in the, the areas, public safety is really basically because of the pensions, specifically to the police pension fund. So that, that decreases the expenditures during the year and part of, part of this increases are decreases also with capital outlays, which actually they, they, they need to be capitalized instead of being an expenditure for accrual basis of accounting. But yeah, just wanted to emphasize the overall difference is very minimal. All right, moving on to the next slide. This is going to be the audit finding. So again, as Aaron mentioned, we, we had one finding during the year, which is a material witness. This is actually a repeat finding from last year. So this relates to the financial statement preparation process. So we acknowledged that the city keeps good supporting records, but we still needed to make audit adjustments to ensure that the financial statements were fully accurate and in accrual basis. So our recommendation, similar to last year, is to put a more structured preparation and review process in place so that everything ties out cleanly before the audit starts. So, and we've identified this as material weakness. And there, there are no other findings or significant deficiencies and instances of non-compliance in accordance with government's auditing standard. And the last bullet point is that we have not noted non-compliance as well in terms of the TIF requirements. So overall, aside from one recurring control issue, it was a clean year. I think that's actually everything in our presentation. So if you have, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have, but we are, thank you again for the time and for all the cooperation during the audit. And I want to specifically thank you, Beth, because she was incredibly patient and helpful throughout the process.
Okay, just FYI for everybody here, I know that was very difficult to understand and see what's going on, but the audits are public information. This summary we went over is also public information. If you ever have any questions about that and you're a CPA and you understand all of it, then, then you're doing better than most of us up here. But still, we, this is serious. We do want to get the audit done, of course, every year and go through this step, even though it's very difficult for people in the audience to understand what's going on in this presentation. So thank you for the presentation, though.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item. Small Business Administration?
Sir, any small business administration?
No?
Anybody online?
Okay, that's fine. Do you have any comments about that?
Just brief, I'll do a brief comment. So basically, maybe what happened during the water prices. We were able to collaborate with Matt and Chamber of Commerce and Illinois Emergency Management Association, AIMA, where basically we were able to request federal assistance for small businesses that were impacted by the water crisis. So the SBA through the federal government are operating low interest loans that are interest free for the first 12 months to help support small businesses that are impacted by that while, you know, we're asking them to have loans or not for rent. Each of these peoples that are failing to us as a community in the federal toolbox that helps assist small businesses after their disaster. They're currently set up at Elevate until Saturday. So if there is anybody who's interested in looking into that, please stop by Elevate and ask for SBA.
Appreciate that, Alex. Now, we're going, we're going to go through motion one and three to get those out of the way, then we'll go right into the solar issues. So motion one?
Motion to adopt special ordinance number 2025-1991, granting a special use for the construction of a telecommunications equipment shelter located at 1005 Lakeland Boulevard. Petitioner Seamless Fiber Innovation Josh Esker, 07-2-13203-000.
A second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any, any summary information you have there?
Uh, this is just one of those fiber huts. We've seen a couple of them on Richmond Avenue, down by the YMCA, 15th and Richmond, and then also in the middle of that block. This is another one. It's down on Lakeland. It's going to be tucked back behind, sat back behind the houses. They, they've got to get a special use and sewn properly, and so they've gone through that procedure and I believe the. And so they've gone through that procedure and I believe the planning commission voted unanimously to prove that.
We did that one commission.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Roll call?
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. And now we'll go to number three.
That's mine. That's your, okay? Yes. I would make motion to approve council decision request 2025-2645, approving the engineering proposal from the Farnsworth Group to perform services for a Phase One engineering study in the amount of $249,567 to extend Swords Drive from Broadway Avenue East North to DeWitt Avenue and authorizing the city manager to sign the proposal, North Swords Extension, Phase One.
Okay, and a second to that motion?
Second, Mayor.
Commissioner Clausen, and go over that real quick.
Again, we are looking at for future development, trying to see if we can get funds and get a design for Swords Avenue to extend from Broadway to DeWitt. Multiple reasons, it opens up land for economic development. When we do the interchange and Route 16 gets very busy, people will be going around to the old Route 316, DeWitt Avenue, and we'll be able to cut across there Swords and go to the sports complex that way. Again, it's just, there's not a lot of roads that connect north and south. You got Logan and then you got Lerner Road. You don't have anything in between. That's a long connection. So this would be a longer connection, except opening up for economic development. And as, as it gets busier out there on the east side, we need more room for traffic. And so being our head of the game, getting this study done, we will be asking for grants to, be prepared to ask for grants to help construct that road.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead. And how's that funded out of?
This would be funded out of the Broadway Avenue East Business and TIF District.
Does that need to be written into the motion?
It's on the CDR, on the bottom of the CDR.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't catch that, didn't see it. So just making sure.
Yeah, last, last sentence says, says it's out of those two funds.
Okay, any other questions in? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Now, just for everybody's information, we only have two other things to do tonight. One of them is the solar farm discussion, which will be the next item. And then we go into executive session to discuss things. We will not be voting on anything in executive session. There will, the only thing we'll do after that meeting, which could go on for who knows how long, only thing we'll do after that meeting is adjourn. So if anybody wants to leave, that's fine. I'm not encouraging you necessarily to do that, but if, if you're not interested in this, these topics, then feel, feel welcome to exit anytime you want. All right, now we'll go ahead and make this motion.
Motion to adopt special ordinance number 2025-1992, granting a rezoning and special use with special conditions between Evergreen Court and North 33rd Street to allow or the construction of a solar farm. Petitioner Hayes Solar LLC, COGSI Development Corp., North of Dodge Grove Cemetery, Evergreen Court, Ralph M. Ima, Senior Project Developer.
And can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Erica Butler. And, okay, so we're going to get, we, we didn't have any comments from the audience tonight on this item. We'll discuss it. If you've got new items to bring up or things you don't understand is what we're voting on, then let us know now. And, but if you've got new items to, to discuss that we haven't discussed before, now's the time to do that. Anybody want to make any comments? Okay, so we're, can we get kind of a summary of where we're at on this, though? Just so everybody's on the same page.
So again, really, the, you know, the, the House and the Senate passed a bill, House Bill 25, that basically would strip the mile and a half zoning regulation of cities in counties that are not zoned for the use of solar. We still can control wind, but we cannot control solar in that mile and a half once the governor signs it. We, we do believe the governor will sign this bill. It's a very large bill with a lot of other things besides solar in there. We believe he will sign that. And we believe that granting a special use with conditions, we have 40 conditions that we have on this special use, things like annexing property, the next parcel to the west of where the solar would go. So that way it would be inside the city limits, the city would have control and jurisdiction because it's inside the state limits, that we would be able to prevent a solar farm from going on that property north of 28th all the way to 33rd. Another condition, the newest condition that we put on there was the property to the north of Evergreen Drive, Evergreen Court. That condition is a condition where we would pay for covenants to basically have control of just solar on that property that the city would not, those landowners would agree not to put solar on it unless the city did that, approved it. So those are the two big conditions. There's several other conditions like five foot high vegetation around the solar field, eight foot tall fence, anything that dies, they have six months to replace the greenery. So we, we've tried to put a lot of stipulations on it to make it pleasing to the neighborhoods. And then we have added those two other ones that are protection for the neighborhoods immediately to their property. Farther north, we will not have any jurisdiction, that'd be the county. But we feel like this is the best thing we can do to protect the citizens and that's why it's back up on the agenda tonight.
Good. A, a, any comments about that statement? Again, there's a lot more to that, but I do think that the city has tried to put the residents in the best position that we can. Yes, ma'am. Could you come up?
I've never done this before, so I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll go ahead and listen.
I live on North 26th and we are seeing so much of the solar panels around us. The northern town is just becoming a solar panel. I don't like it personally. I do not think it looks nice. I've seen, as I drive up, that house in north, the way that the, I'm sorry to might offend anyone, but the way it's been taken care of was terrible.
Yeah.
I think bringing it closer to town, and closer to town, is just going to continue that trend.
Right.
That's going to hurt my property values, which as people know, our property consists are always going to. It's not much. But it's, it's unpleasant to look at.
Yeah. You know, we can't, we don't control that. You understand that? Okay.
But it's just in addition to what we were saying as far as greenery.
Right.
Of that nature. I just want to, you know, throw that out there that.
Right.
People may be in the range, you know, I really need to come to the best thing to say.
Okay. Okay.
Now, can you address that? Because that is part of the conditions on here that we're, I mean, it is a requirement that they, they do maintain the property, update it.
With the special use, we will be able to make sure that they do upkeep that. I mean, yes, there'll be a court series of if they're not doing it, we'll have to, you know, write them a letter saying, you need to do this, this is part of the special use. But eventually we can, we revoke the special use if they're not living up to the conditions.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate.
And, and part of the requirement also is there is, there's funds in, there's funds available that have been.
To get approval from the state, they have to have a decommissioning.
To clean the property.
Laws with the, yeah, with the department and they have to have it bonded. They review those bonds every five years and make sure there's enough money in there to decommission.
Okay, we have one more person that'd like to make a comment, if you would?
I guess I misunderstood, Rosemary Myers, 1112, 32nd. I guess I misunderstood from our last meeting. I thought it was discussion about annexing the property from 28th to 33rd so that that solar would not be in there. Could you clarify that?
So, so the property, not the property with the solar's going on, but the property to the west, that parcel is being annexed. That's part of the conditions, it would be annexed into the city. Not tonight, but it will be before the special use is granted.
Oh, Anderson, 9212, Evergreen Sports. I wanted to come here and say on like record, just like I have the last two times. When I initially came in, we talked about the issue with the special use permit using Evergreen for its traffic. That was met with amendment and the slower sound, they found a new way around it last week ago. I saw the, the annex to the west, my concern was the road to the north. And that's been met with amendment. And so I appreciate the council's work and working in collaboration with everyone involved and understanding that the state is going to have say. And so finding a way to protect that, the city mat soon, for the opportunity for residential to come on the north side of Evergreen and giving opportunities for the community growth. So I get to live here and be able to feel good about things. So I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to make any other comments about, about this issue? Yes, please, if you would.
Chad Lowery, 1112, 31st. Like a month ago, we heard from our attorney and this legislation was still going on.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Okay, so if you all would have voted then, and would that have been like grandfathered in, passed?
No, no.
Why?
Okay, what, what, once the state passes that, I mean, we would have turned it down, it would have been turned down. They would be able to reapply once the governor signs this bill.
Through the.
Through the county. And, and it would have, the county can't do, can't put condition on it other than what is in the statute.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Do you all have a special intention?
Yeah. Again, I don't want to, I don't want to, I didn't intend necessarily to, to limit anybody about making any comments, but I just didn't necessarily want to repeat them all the time, but I don't want you to, if you've got any comments to make tonight about this before we vote, because we are going to vote here in just a few minutes on this issue. So everybody okay? Okay, all right.
So. Yes, I have a quick comment to say, because I think, I think we've done a, I think everybody, all the parties involved have done a good job. You're talking about 267 acres up there, 160 to the north of Evergreen. If I, my numbers are right, 100 acres or 107 acres from Dodge Grove all the way to 33rd Street. And we've basically, by doing the amendments and everybody agreeing, we've protected 237 of those acres regardless of what the government, the governor does. That's almost 90% of that farmland up there we've protected from solar. I think that's a, I think that's a heck of a win, frankly. So I just give kudos to everybody, all parties involved. Residents, the solar people, Mr. Schaefer, and certainly the council for supporting, supporting and trying to make it work.
All right, everybody okay? All right, we're going to roll call. We had a motion, a second, discussion?
Yay, Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Okay, so that, that item is taken care of then. And, oh, I do have Thomas by counsel. I forgot to say that we always do that right before we go into executive session. So we'll just start right over here with Mr. Butler.
Thank you all for your concerns, questions, thoughts, suggestions. I hope that you feel like we have met you where you are and tried to satisfy all parties. So thank you for your time.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Clausen.
I just want to second what Commissioner Butler said. We do appreciate from the last three council meetings, all the attendance, all, all your comments, the passions, we understand that. Hopefully, I, I think Commissioner Phipps is, when, when you protect 90% of that farmland, and I think my thoughts again, if we had somehow voted this down, we'll tell on how many would have popped up. So it was, this council, I, I really feel did our due diligence and you all as well. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, again, thank you all for being here and giving us your, your input, your ideas, your thoughts. I definitely understand and, and sympathize with, with your situation and where you're at and your thoughts on it. To me, it's, it's come down from a risk reward viewpoint of, of where we're at with the, with the short and the long term goals of the city and in the, in the future. And trying to minimize the, the city's exposure to costly litigation. And I think voting yes on this project with the, with the conditions that I've put on it is, is in the best interest of the city as a whole. I fully realize that some of you are, are probably not happy with, with where it's at now. But again, from a risk reward where it's at and the stipulations that have been put on it, I think this was the best, best route forward for all. And I do appreciate staff's work and everybody involved coming up with, with the best, the best overall scenario that I think when it started that we could have hoped for. So again, I, I thank everybody for your input. One other item on a separate note, Kyle, if we could, I'd like to request that, that we plan maybe in the spring, if we could plan on a public hearing for an update on the water situation and the water treatment, kind of get that on public record a few months prior. I know that's an ongoing thing that we're continuing to work on and projects for next summer before the weather gets hot again, just so, just so people have an idea that it's not on the back burner and things are, are progressing. So I'd like to see something maybe in late March, April, maybe if we could do a public hearing on an update.
Very good, yes, we can do.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, any final comments?
Nothing more on that. I just want to thank everybody and also remind everybody Thursday night is the walk through the lightworks.
Yep.
So planning on attendance is always a fun time.
And it'll be warmer out there than it is in here. So.
Yeah, one, one final comment I'll make is that we understand that all the people, virtually all the people in this room, you're our customers. We have about 18,000 customers in the community and we work for you. We try to make decisions that are the best for everybody or the best that we can. And I think we came to a reasonable settlement on this item. So that's really all I have. And now we need, let's see, I guess I'm, I can make that. Okay, so I, I move, we recessed a closed session pursuant to Illinois Open Meetings Act for the discussion of the appointments, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the city or legal counsel for the city under 5 IL CS 120, 2C1, and the discussion of the purchase or lease of real property for the use of public, of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussion whether a particular parcel should be acquired under 5 IL CS 120, 2C5, and the discussion of a setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body under 5 IL 120, 2C6. And can I have a second to that motion? Okay.
I missed part of that, can you repeat?
Some of the, yeah, some of the five IL CSs were confusing, but anyway, yes. So you're welcome to stay till we get out. We're not taking any action after that. And. Roll call, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
At this time, I will mute and pause the recording until we get back from executive session. Okay, we're back from the executive session.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
And a second to that motion? And a second to that motion. Okay, stay.
Second.
Second, okay.
You gotta watch your.
Roll call.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps.
No.
You break, you break the tie?
Yes.
Oh, you're gonna make him break the tie.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
All right.